I'd like to call the regular meeting of the PBD City Council to order. This meeting is being televised live on cable, Channel 9, and is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our city stenographer. At this time, I'd like to entertain a moment of silence. And now, the Pledge of Allegiance. You heard the motion by Councilor Gould, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. We'll now move on to Item 4, hearings for a special permit. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Alwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Darah Chim, 51 Bayview Avenue, Number 1, Lynn, Mass, for a special permit seeking to locate an office and shop of a contractor with no outdoor storage of vehicles or equipment at 96 Lynn Street, first floor, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councillor Thomas J. Rozignol, City Council President.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Can the petitioner state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Darah Chim. My address is 51 Bayview Avenue, Lynn, Mass, 01902. I'm here to apply for a special permit to set up the office at 96 Lynn Street in PBD Mass. The office I'm applying for, for the license, is for the bidding purpose only, for the work. There's no employee, there's only two employees in there. One of them worked for part-time, and the other one, that's me, worked full-time. It's only two people in there. There's no field employee coming in and out, there's no client, there is no overnight parking, there's no equipment, anything that's still on site. And the company already have, the state already approved the license to operate it, but they hold on to the license until we got the special permit from the City of PBD, and then they're going to release it. So I'm here tonight to ask for the approval of their special license. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Opposition? Seeing none, Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a chance earlier this week to meet with Mr. Chim, and as he mentioned, it's a pretty straightforward use. It's going to be himself and one employee. Essentially, it'll be used as a back office for purposes of billing, record-keeping, and scheduling for his estimation business, which primarily is asbestos mitigation and lead paint encasement. So, it looked very straightforward to me. The only comments I wanted to address were those of the Health Department. That is a pretty busy parcel of land, right there. There's a number of businesses back there, and there's been some issues with garbage containment overflowing and some rodent mitigation challenges. Due to that, I'd like to suggest that we ask the owner of the property to put in another five-yard dumpster to address the concerns of the Health Department. But as far as the use that Mr. Chim has suggested and is interested in pursuing, I have no problems with that.
I open it up to the council. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, Councilor Welton, is the property behind the convenient food mart, 7-Eleven or whatever it is, in the back there?
So it's actually behind and adjacent to, if you're looking at 7-Eleven, it'd be on the left. So it's, there's a short, excuse me, a narrow corridor right to the left of the barbershop. I think it's Parente Insurance is the blue building up front. This parcel, the rear entrance of 96R, it comes right back to where the rear entrance for the barbershop in the Korean restaurant would be. And then the parking, the two parking spots that they would have for the building are on the other side. So there's actually another street on the other side of the long, blue building.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Councilor Welton. Councilor Welton, is the building owner agreeable to the additional dumpster request?
I have not spoken to the building owner about the additional dumpster request. Through communication with the Health Department, I thought that would be the easiest way to address some of those concerns. For this particular business, if you've been back there, there's five or six different parcels that the building owner has, and there are a number of dumpsters back there, but even in my, you know, brief inspection, you can see that some of them are overflowing, that, you know, it's in a pretty populated area. So challenges with rodents in South PBD are certainly a concern. So I think just to make it easier, in being that this is going to be a new use, I would suggest a five-yard dumpster. It doesn't seem like too big of a request.
It's very close to the Wood 2 line there, so I know you'll stay on top of that and make sure the rodent issue is thoroughly addressed with the building owner, because clearly, we've had a number of complaints in both Ward 1 and Ward 2 with respect to that property. So I know you're going to follow up with the Health Department and appreciate that you're making that effort. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Councilor Welton, along the same lines regarding the rodent issue. Do you know the, what the Health Department, have they fined? At what point have they fined them? At first offense, second offense? What exactly is the issue that they're not addressing?
Thank you. So, in speaking with the Health Department, the particular parcel at which the petitioner here is requesting a special permit has not been in question. So 96R has not been an issue. However, the adjacent properties of 98R, and I think it's maybe 100 and 101, have had issues with trash in terms of dumpsters being overflowed. Because it's not this particular, so the feedback I received from the Health Department is this particular building has not been a problem. It's more the landlord maintaining the dumpsters that are already on-site. So again, through an effort to address some of the challenges with the trash, I would like to see another dumpster placed there.
Councilor Manning-Martin.
Thank you. So, it's been an ongoing issue for the owner who lives in Danvers, who owns 96 to 102 Lynn Street, under Valige Luigi trustee. So, and I commend your effort and suggestion to add a dumpster, but I'm wondering if it would be more, it would behoove us to find out, because again, we certainly don't want to take it out on this gentleman trying to rent a property, but I think it might behoove us to find out exactly when trash pickup is, it's provided by private company, how often it's done, and what the particulars are. Because I do take issue with the owner, it appears with this gentleman renting out there, that this property owner has full occupancy and tenants in all the office spaces. And so, it really is in finances that are keeping the, I don't believe that there's a struggle to follow and abide by proper trash removal and concern for the residents of South PBD and the surrounding area to stay on top of the trash, given, as you said, the severe rodent issue we have in South PBD. So, I would be happy to work with you to reach out to that property owner and have a conversation as to exactly what they do, what their schedule is, and what they plan to do to improve, given, again, that they've got full occupancy and a lot of rent coming in to, you know, operate as better neighbors in that regard. So I'd be happy to do that with you, and I commend you for your suggestion for an additional dumpster. We can look at those type of things. I'd be happy to work with you and do that. Thank you.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of just wanted to briefly respond to Councilor, excuse me, Manning-Martin. Counselors, just so you know, it's the three parcels, it's Parente Insurance, it's the 7-Eleven Plaza, and then it's Eastern Bank. So one of those issues with the Health Department, actually, was you that sent it forward, was remember the front of the Eastern Bank was in total disarray, and you had asked that it be better maintained. But in reference to your question about fines, I know there was at least one $300 fine issued from the Health Department, and I believe there was a second, which they may have waived since, this is Luigi, that owns Luigi's on Lynnfield Street. So since he was very, he was responsive as soon as he found out about the issue, he sent his building manager over there to address it. So I think they may have waived the second one. But again, you know, I think Council Welton's on the right track with maybe making sure that since all three parcels are buddy each other, that they're not all using the same dumpster behind K Restaurant and 7-Eleven. If we treat each parcel individually, and they're required, as they would be if they weren't the same owner, to have their own trash disposal, I think we would be less likely to have overflowing dumpsters in the area. So I would be in favor with the dumpster. Thank you.
Any other comments by the council? Councilor Charis.
Thank you, President. I just ask through you to Councilor Welton, we're having an issue with, and we'll see it in our packet, dumpsters being picked up early in the morning. If we can make sure the facility who picks up the dumpsters is well aware of our ordinance here in the city, no matter who the company is. So move with courtesy. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Councilor Welton.
Move to approve a special permit. Excuse me, close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Welton.
Excuse me, move to approve special permit, seeking to locate an office and shop of a contractor with no outdoor storage or vehicles or equipment at 96 Lynn Street, first floor, PBD.
Just for clarification, are you going to add the language of the dumpster?
Yes, thank you. With the condition of adding a five-yard dumpster specific to this parcel, 96R Lynn Street.
Heard the motion by Councilor Welton. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, thank you. Since we have, we have two parents slash teachers, or teacher, in the audience, I have Haley Guerino and Erin Thorpe, as well as Addie Guerino, Haley's daughter, they were here under the impression that we were going to approve the funding for the Brown School playground this evening, where it's only going to be a transfer. Was wondering if there'd be any objection for me to take that under suspension of the rules out of order and refer Item 7D to Finance Committee, so that these two parents that have been there from the beginning can follow the money and make sure that we're moving forward in a timely manner, which I think is why they're here. Any objection to, under suspension of the rules, receiving Item 7D and referring to Finance?
You heard the motion by Councilor Turco. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Moving on to Item 4B, Special Permit Hearing. I ask the city clerk to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Alwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Care &amp; Choice Transportation, Inc., care of 8 Charles Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit seeking to locate an office for a charter service with the overnight parking of up to four vehicles at 119 Rare Foster Street, Building 3, Unit 1, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councillor Thomas J. Rozignol, City Council President.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name and what your intentions are. Thank you.
My name is Eva Quinlan, and I live at 8 Charles Street in PBD, Massachusetts, and I'd like to open an office for a transportation company for special education students and medical appointments and early interventions. I submitted my application, and I know that Mr. McGinn called me about, Council McGinn called me about a question on one of the items. So I wanted to clarify that, if that's all right, if I can do that first. So one of the things that we want to do, we have 35 employees total. The company is divided into three different divisions. In this area, we don't have, we only have eight or nine vans and 16 employees. But on one of the items, I said that three people will be in the office all day, and then I said 14 may come into the office after 9:30 but be gone by 4:30. They wouldn't be coming and staying there. They would come in and drop off either paperwork or pick paperwork up, but most of our runs, I don't even know why I put 4:30, because most of our runs start at like 1:30 in the afternoon and end at 4:30. So I just wanted to make sure I clarified that. One of the biggest issues that I know I spoke about with Mr. McGinn was about overnight parking. So we are obligated by state and city contracts to have backup vans, and we have to have at least four of them currently. I only have two. We will be purchasing a third to meet one of our contracts. And we wanted to be able to park, when I talked to the building inspector, he said, whatever you think you may do, put it on the paper. So currently, we would only be parking two overnight, but be a possibility of up to four overnight. And the landlord has assigned eight spaces to us in this area for us to be parking for employees and those four vans. So it's not eight plus four, it's a total of eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you just heard from the petitioner, Ms. Quinlan, we have spoken a couple of times. She has been extremely thorough and responsive, and I very much appreciate that. The spaces for these vehicles are allocated on the property. I think there's kind of an indication of the size of the vehicles we're talking about there. I think the property owner has allocated dedicated parking on the property for these spots. I don't see any significant impact on the area. As you just heard, a lot of the ins and outs will happen on off-peak hours, so I don't see that as a major issue for the area. It's an important service that they're providing, and I think it's a good fit for, good use for the particular facility that they're looking to locate in. So my intent is to support this application, and at this point, I'd open it up to other councilors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. Councilman Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eva, I know how hard you've worked over the years, and to me, you've always been a champion. I'm so impressed with the fact that you, all the work that you've done over the years, and now you're in a position to own your own company and start your own business with 35 employees, doing something that you love, that is needed in this city and all around the surrounding communities. I've always been impressed with you. You've always been a champion of mine, and I just wish you the best. I'm very happy for you.
Thank you.
Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I live in the area, and I think, you know, this is one of those types of operations where it's going to be placed exactly where it really is going to be beneficial to you, your clients, and have less of an impact in the community. You know, sometimes we get discussions about vehicles coming and going, and I think that the off-hours, the way you've been in your application, as Councilman McGinn and Councilman Manning-Martin have mentioned, you've been very thorough. I think that there'll be minimal impact on anybody living in the area, and it's a great service. So I think this is a win-win for everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from Care &amp; Choice Transportation, Inc., care of 8 Charles Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit seeking to locate an office for charter service with the overnight, with the overnight parking of up to four vehicles at 119 Rare Foster Street, Building 3, Unit 1, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is Item 4C. We'll have the clerk read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Alwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from North American Self-Storage Group, LLC, 3595 Cadillac Avenue, Costa Mesa, California, for a special permit seeking to modify special permit 16-2017 by deleting the condition of no outdoor storage and to allow for the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles, RVs, and boats, not to exceed 18 in total, at 137 Summit Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councillor Thomas J. Rozignol, City Council President.
Thank you. Flow is yours.
All right. Good evening, for the record. My name's Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Neandover Street in PBD, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the petitioner with respect to their special permit application. As you may remember, in May of 2017, this council granted my client a special permit to utilize the property as a self-storage facility. Our property has one building, it contains about 120,000 square feet of area, it's situated on a lot that's approximately four and a half acres of land, and we are in the IP zoning district. In June, a couple of months after that, in June of 2017, the petitioner's affiliate purchased this property, they purchased it for 5.2 million, and then subsequent to that, they invested another 7.5 million dollars in renovating and converting this building into the existing self-storage facility. I believe now that they've been open for a little bit, over a year now, and they do business as Cube Smart. When we applied for our original special permit in 2017, I did request for the outdoor storage of the RVs and boats, since those uses are allowed in the IP district by a special permit. However, the council at that hearing requested that I withdraw that aspect of our application, because the councilors wanted to see this operation up and running, to make a determination if it was having any adverse impact to the traffic on Summit Street or to any of the residents on Summit Street. The petitioner, as I said earlier, has been open for approximately a year now, and at least to our knowledge, we don't know that we've created any problems on Summit Street either traffic-wise or for its residents. As you can see from the site plan that I submitted with the application, the petitioner's proposing a limited number of storage spaces for the RVs and boats, which type of use is now becoming the norm on these larger self-storage facilities. The proposed storage area, it's located at the rear of the property, so as not to be visible from Summit Street. They are proposing only 18 spaces. Each space is only 12 feet wide by 25 feet in length, and as a result, only small to medium-sized RVs or boats can be stored on the property. The petitioner does have a provision in his agreements that no boat or RV can be stored on the property that has either a removable or portable fuel tank. And we've also located all of these spaces behind our security gate, so that access to these vehicles can only be accomplished during the normal access hours. The reason this use has become popular with these larger facilities is it does provide a homeowner or someone who's renting an apartment a more safe and convenient and aesthetic place to store these vehicles, and for others, they don't have the ability to store it at home, or zoning may not allow it, or there may be some other restriction that prevents them from doing so. I personally don't believe that the proposed use is going to create any adverse effect to the surrounding area. The owners of RVs obviously don't use these on a daily basis, you know, if they use once or twice a month, that would be a lot. Most of the boat storage is people who are storing their boat for the off-season, be in the fall and the winter, and in the in-season, it's traditionally your weekend boaters. The petitioner does own other facilities that provide this service, and at any of those facilities, I've never had a problem with the neighborhoods in which the facilities are located. And I certainly know that everybody knows that a self-service facility is probably the most benign use of any real estate. I mean, it generates absolutely minimal amount of traffic, it has no peak rush hour, it has no peak day travel, and more often than not, you don't have more than, you know, five or six customers on-site at any one time. And I don't think the additional, our additional use is going to create or change any of those factors. I have with me this evening, Mr. Russ Colvin, he's one of the principals of the petitioner, and together, we'll try to answer any questions that the council or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Michael Fitzgerald. I live at 126 Summit Street, which is directly across from the entrance to Cube Smart. I'm sure you're all aware of the traffic issue on Summit Street. For at least six hours a day, it's gridlock. On the weekends, there's cars coming in and out of that Cube Smart all day long. I've been out my front yard, see it constantly. I'm concerned about RVs and boats trying to pull out of that lot, you know, there's accidents on that street almost weekly, and I'm very concerned about the additional traffic these boats and RVs are going to cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, Councilor Charis.
Thank you, Council President. I reached out to the petitioner's attorney on this several times and spoke to them. I would like to make a motion to receive late communication that was on our desk from the fire department. So move.
You heard the motion from Councilor Charis. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
The, up until tonight, I haven't heard any complaints on the facilities, so I'm interested in the gentleman's conversation with having a concern, a valid concern, obviously. But I haven't not, I have not received any complaints on, from the police or fire I haven't not, I have not received any complaints on, from the police or fire on the use of the facility. And I'd reached out to my fellow counselors, who were counselors on that area too, and to our best, we haven't received any other complaints on it. It is kind of a benign use. It's like 18 spots. When this came up first, I have to admit, I was not here. It was my mom's wake and funeral, so I had Counselor Turco do this meeting for me, so I wasn't remembering the whole evening as best. With this, I do see some of the concerns on, with the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, and the fire with vehicles, not obstruction vehicles coming in. Have you acknowledged, have you recognized that? And if this was approved, you would need to follow the recommendations on all the departments of their recommendations on this petition?
We understand that.
One of the things I really want you to take real close attention to going on a regular basis is the, any food that's left on the facilities, on the boats or the RVs, because we have such a, we do have a rat problem and a rodent problem, so I want to make sure building, Board of Health is fantastic on this, so I want to make sure you follow that to a T if it is approved. I have no objections to it, also because I have not, again, have not received any complaints on what's going on there. Now, I do understand the concern with RVs coming out and boats coming out, but I do recognize, and was a boat owner at one point in time in my life, is that once you got the boat out of the storage for the season, you not usually bring it back. It's a seasonal, seasonal thing. So I do not have any objections on this. The parking spaces are in the back. It would not be seen by any of the neighbors that I was concerned with, so I'd like to see that. And the fact that there's only 18 parking spots for this. Again, this can certainly is a special permit. If there's an issue coming in front of us after this is, if it is approved, we can certainly bring them back in and revoke that part of this special permit. Am I correct?
You are correct. And the property used to be a warehouse with tractor-trailers going in and out of it every day.
Right. So I'm inclined to approve this with the understanding of the, you know, the fire department concern of the parking ban shall not obstruct any fire department access to the operation. The Department of Health on their requirements for pest control, the requirement and requests from the conservation, that that is met. You seen that, the two different paragraphs?
Cube Smart.
Okay. And with that, I'll open, if any other counselors have any other amendments to be open to. Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counselor Charis. Counselor, could you explain the Conservation Commission's concern to me? I just found it confusing. Were they, I thought they were asking for this information in advance of this being approved. Am I reading it wrong?
Yes. If it's approved, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
Counselor Shuruss.
Yeah, well, I understand that they are looking for information, and it would need to be done prior to utilizing the spaces as so mentioned in the permit. If they don't accommodate the request, they won't be able to use it. So I want to make sure it's clear that any and all the information that is being asked about, asked for from the Conservation is being met before the uses.
You can incorporate that into the special permit, but my plan is if the permit's granted, I'm going to write a letter to the commission requesting an appointment, so we can go over our use, because as you can tell from the memo, they don't even know if our use is applicable.
Right.
We'll go, we'll explain. If it turns out that there's something we need to file with the Conservation Commission, obviously we're going to do that.
Well, that would be in part of my request.
Okay, thank you. That's clear. So then you're recommending an approval pending, pending the Conservation Commission is satisfied, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Von Zalitis. The scenario that Counselor Shuruss described is what I would have expected, that, you know, a boat or an RV leaves for seasonal use. But I think I might have heard you say something different than that, is that maybe an apartment dweller might bring it back and forth. What is the expectation? Is it, is the expectation that these things are going to leave for an extended period of time, or is the expectation that they're going to come and go in the same?
They generally are stored for an extended period of time.
Could you state your name and?
Oh, sorry. My name is Russ Colvin with North American Self-Storage. They're generally stored for a fairly extended period of time, where people will come and get them a few times a year to use them. That's generally the scenario.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it would be, it's not like they're taking the boat to moor it someplace for the summer, or, you know, putting it in their yacht or something for the summer to tow it. They're coming and going through the boating season. Is that, is that accurate, or is it a kind of a mixed bag? Some of them leave for the?
I would say the majority of the people are storing it in the off-season, and the people that are in the in-season, there is no standard. But, you know, I own a boat, and I work Monday through Friday. I use it on Saturdays. So if I was storing my boat there, I'd be probably coming and going every Saturday. And I'm sure that there are other people that may store their boat there. They'd be doing the same thing. But I understand these aren't big boats. Our spaces are only 25 feet long. You know, a boat is on a trailer. The trailer has probably like a three-foot tongue on it. So you're talking boats that are like 22, 23 to 20 feet long.
Well, how about with respect to an RV? Would that leave for the summer, or that just leaves when these people go on vacation to drive their RV someplace? Is that, is that a typical?
I would say.
I'm just trying to get to how frequently these things are coming and going from the property.
I have friends that own RVs. It's, you know, they're not used on any frequency at all. I mean, I'm sure others know people who own RVs. They're normally parked in one location unless they're going to take an extended vacation, take a week off with the kids and go to another state. So no, they are not coming and going.
It seems like the RVs would probably go, come and go less frequently, would be. Is there a mix between boats and RVs that you're shooting for here, or is it going to be? You have?
No mix. It's basically first come, first served.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Checo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as Ethan mentioned, I did in 2017 say that if there were no issues at this property, there were a few neighbors from Summit Street there at that time, and they had concerns about, similar concerns to the resident here tonight of access and egress. And I said if there were no issues over, I think I mentioned maybe a year period, that I would be in favor of this. And as Counselor Shuruss mentioned, that's the junction of Woods 5, 2, 1, and 4, unbelievably, that line right there. And I don't think any of us have gotten a complaint. The one thing I did notice, Ethan, is that that front entryway needs to be paved, because there's some aggregate that's all broken up in there and that continually gets dragged out onto Summit Street. But in reference, other than that, if, hopefully, Mr. Colvin's going to take care of that shortly. But as far as the resident's concern with the, and Counselor McGinn's concern with the 18 recreational vehicles, I do believe that the vast majority of those are seasonal. I don't think that you'll see many boaters coming on a daily basis to pull a, it's a pain in the neck to pull a boat in and out every day. So I don't think that that will be an issue. And as Counselor Shuruss said, if it becomes an issue, we can have the petitioner back and make adjustments to that permit as needed. But I would be in favor of this. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Von Zalitis. Ethan, is there, in order to get an RV or a boat in, there's direct access and any backing up and turning around they do inside on the property? None of it's done on Summit Street?
None of it's done on Summit Street. I mean, no one's going to be backing into this facility or backing out of it. There's plenty of, if you look at our 18 spaces, people will back their trip, obviously will back their boat or their RV into the space, so that they can come straight out. But there's maneuvering in the rear of the property.
In hours of operation?
These, I know I have at my application. The office hours are 9:30 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, and 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Sunday. But their access hours are Monday through Sunday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Anybody that rents there has given a card that controls the gate, and that gate's controlled on a timer.
I just have a concern. The gentleman that spoke, the neighbor, you know, obviously living there, it's not convenient to, you know, not convenient is not the right word. Living there is, you're subject to all this traffic anyway on Summit Street. Is 10 o'clock a reasonable hour to be pulling a boat or an RV in and out, 10 o'clock at night?
I don't think we'd have a problem with cutting it shorter if you think that's a problem. I mean, I don't see many boaters coming back at that time of the evening.
So is there a separate, are there separate hours for the boats/RVs than the storage unit itself?
I talked to the manager that was on the property, and I believe their cards can be programmed for different hours than the regular storage units.
Be amendable to changing the end hours to what I think is more reasonable time?
Well, tell me what you think is more reasonable time.
Well, you said it was 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
You're making me go back now. Let me see.
I'm sorry. Monday through Sunday.
Monday through Sunday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I'd like to see, that is for the whole facility in general?
That's for the people that store indoors in the units, yes.
Is there any way to differentiate with the cards on?
Yes.
RV and?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we could shorten that to, you know, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, but not 10:00 PM.
How about 8:00 PM?
Okay, if that's, if that's what, you know, if that's what you're willing to do. Sir, does that help at all?
Please, Director Counsel.
Sir, mind coming up and talking? We're trying to help with some, some hours here. Thank you, sir.
I know plenty of people with boats too, and they don't have a place to store them. They don't have a mooring. They don't have a dock. They don't have anything. They take them out Saturday morning. They bring them back Saturday afternoon. They take them out Sunday morning. They bring them back Saturday afternoon. If you had a place to store it, most boatyards have winter storage for a boat.
Correct?
Year-round storage, but I'm saying this is going to be in and out all weekend long.
Well, trying to help on the end hours, sir, and I hear what you're saying. So Mr. Von Zalitis, would you be willing to do 8:00 PM for the boats and the RVs?
I'm going to let the owner. When the council approved this project in 2017, we promised that we were going to do a first-class project, that we're going to complete it on time. We're going to make substantial improvements to the property. We're going to be a good neighbor. And the idea was we would come back later to discuss this issue. We also said that we felt it would pretty much be an end to any tractor-trailer traffic in and out of the property, and it has been. There are not any tractor-trailers coming in and out of our property, to my knowledge. And I think that's a big benefit for the neighbors. I mean, there's 25,000 cars a day that, on that street, on average, I think. This would just be a handful of, you know, RV and boat track, traffic on average. And, I mean, I think we've done everything we said we're going to do, and we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, Counselor Gould.
All set.
Thank you.
I just discussed with Counselor Shuruss. Thank you.
Counselor Sassla.
Thank you, Council President. So usually when you rent a storage facility, it's on a month-to-month basis. I'm curious, on the boating, off-season boating, do you usually go month-to-month, or do you lock them in for six months or three months? Is it different with recreational vehicles and boats?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that.
So usually, from my experience, storage facilities, when someone rents, they go month-to-month.
Correct.
The question is, is on RVs and boating, is it the same, or, I'll give, the reason I'm asking the question is, so instance, in the wintertime, you don't want someone, you know, taking up a spot. You want to have them occupied fully in the off-season. So do you make them sign a contract for longer than month-to-month, or is it still just month-to-month?
Generally, all the agreements are month-to-month in the industry for, you know, for self-storage unit and for RV and boat.
Okay. You know, I did see in the notes when you came the first time, that I believe there was a different gentleman who spoke against it. He's not here tonight. You know, one of the things that we also have as a problem is sometimes is, in our neighborhoods, some of the ward councils, we get calls about people storing their boats in the yard, which actually is not, is not legal. There's an ordinance against that, unless it's, I believe the list is covered and it can't be seen by the neighbors. So, and I understand that there are boatyards, I assume boatyards. What I found out is, when you rent from a boatyard, you pay the cost you lot to the water. So in this situation, you're certainly not that close to the water. And I do believe that most people are not going to pull it out on a daily basis. Maybe they'll put it on a Saturday or Sunday if they have no choice. But I'm leaning to support it, because I think that, as I said, it does also allow another problem that does pop up occasionally to alleviate that and to explain to people that we do have places in the city where you can store a boat, and it cannot be on your property. And as, as the property looks fine, I have not received any calls at all since I've been here, since it's been permitted. So I'm in favor of this proposal with, if it becomes a situation where it's just out of control, then I would, I would agree that there are ramifications, and Counselor Shuruss could bring it back before the full council. But unless, but I'm comfortable with approving it, knowing that we can do that if need be. Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I as well think that there's actually a need for this along the lines of what Counselor Sassla has pointed out, that we don't want boats stored in people's yards, and that does happen. So to be able to provide that service in the city is a benefit. And again, as Counselor Sassla points out, we're not that close to the water. So my concern, although I do understand what you're trying to do, Counselor Gould, my concern is, say, in the summer, daylight savings, it's, people would have, if we put an end, if you have eight or nine, even nine o'clock at night, I'm afraid, people pulling their boats out after, say, they spend the weekend on the water, and they pull their boats out at eight o'clock, they really have to hustle to pull their boat out and get it back for a closing time. So I think that that would be unfair to the storage facility if we were to change the hours to anything sooner. So I don't know what the, what Counselor Shuruss had planned at this point, whether to keep it at 10, or if you plan to have them close up a little earlier. I would be concerned about making it too tight on the back end for those reasons. I think it'll hurt their business, and it won't be as helpful to the city to keep people's boats out of their yards. boats out of their yards.
Councilor Sharis.
Councilor Manning, yeah, that was my concern. Being a former boat owner, during the season, it's still daylight at 8:30, right? And getting it out, you're washing it down at the marina, and you're bringing it back. The one reason why I'm not, I'm not really overly concerned is because a lot of people don't bring their boats back and forth into a storage center like this. My experience and my conversations with others is because it is a pain in the butt to get it in there, back and in. They usually, they take it out for the season, they have it at the dry dock of a marina, or they have it in, as a morn, or they do keep it in their yard. But Council Sassla did hit on what we talked about earlier. I had a lot of interest with people saying, "I need a spot." And neighbors are saying, you know, "Bob, I'm looking at your boat and your RV every day in the driveway, I really wish you'd get it to another, another area, another spot." And then the special permit, is there a need? And as, like you said, there is a need for this. And there's, there's not many, there's 18, so I wouldn't want to go heavy into that. I know at one point they talked about more, and then I wasn't in favor of that. And coming in and out, again, if that is an issue, do we have an issue with the U-Hauls and the moving trucks coming in and out through all the time there? I have not, I don't live across the street from it, but I have not seen or heard concerns with that. So to answer your question, I am a little concerned with the shutting the time down earlier, much earlier, but if the petitioner is agreeing to it, then he's agreeing to it. And, but I would want them to be very cautious about the time they would be agreeing to it, because I don't want them to have to come back and say, "Listen, I agreed to such-and-such time," but that really doesn't work. So I would really want them to be clear, if it's eight o'clock, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, yeah, I can understand, it's late enough. Eight and nine o'clock is really a time that I would be looking for the petitioner to be agreeing to, that's reasonable, and again, not to inhibit their, their business.
So, if I may, so you are changing, are you going to recommend it be changed from 10 p.m. to what?
I would like to have, I would, yes, I would like to have it changed from 10. I'm not so sure that's fair, the other people who are renting the units have until 10, but the petitioner did say that he would be, you know, fine with that, so if he said he was fine with that, and no one's breaking their arms.
If I may, fine with what hour, Council Sharis?
I would say nine o'clock.
Any further comments? I have a couple. I'll start with hours of operation, since that's where we kind of left off. I am 100% in agreement with Councilor Manning-Martin. I don't think changing the hours of operation would actually be a benefit, I actually think it would be a negative for twofold. One, if you think about Summit Street and the amount of traffic that goes down Summit Street, the peak hours are what we're trying to get away from. I would rather people come at 6 o'clock in the morning, be gone, and then they come back when there's no traffic, they can get in, no, without traffic. My fear would be somebody trying to pull a boat in when you have traffic backed up from Linfield Street all the way to Forest Street. Like, that, to me, I would rather have the hour of operations extended so that it's an easier transition for a bus or an RV. Second point, I think that, I have a few friends that are boat owners, it is extremely expensive to house your boat in a yard, so this would be an absolute cost savings to them, and then what they do is they pull it out for the season, and then they put it back at the end of the season, so you're really, in some instances, you're only talking about one entrance, one exit. So those are my thoughts about hours of operation anyways. I think it would actually be a misuse if we decrease the amount of time, because the amount of traffic that is on Summit Street. Second point I just wanted to raise, which was raised earlier regarding the Conservation Commission, so I want to be completely clear on this. So if the Conservation Commission comes back and they deem this property a land use with higher potential pollution loads, then you will put in a storm management drain, correct?
If they determine that, then I'd have to file an applicable application with them, and they will tell me what type of installation I would have to do. Traditionally, it would be a gas and oil separator catch basin.
And I only say that because, looking at the use, looking at the facility today, there is wetlands directly to, looking at the building to the left of it, and I would not like leaching or any sort of oils or surface water going into, to that area. So that would be a strong concern of mine. Third, when this building changed from a, basically a truck terminal, which I think the use is a much better suited now that it's a storage facility than a truck terminal, which it basically was, you did narrow the entrance of what is now the cube. Do you plan on increasing the curb cut at the entrance of the facility? And I ask that because if you're talking about, I mean, we're very vague on sizes of storaged equipment, whether it's a boat, you're like, "Oh, 20, 22," well, there's a different turn radius for a 20-foot boat than there is for a 24-foot boat. There's a different turn radius for an RV that's 10-foot versus 30-foot. So I just want to make sure that the curb cut at the entrance of Summit justify and satisfies the need for every equipment that is going to be stored on your facility, so that there isn't a problem with, "Oh, well, we thought it was a 22-foot boat, it's a 24-foot boat, so now we have to back in from Summit Street." So I want to make sure that that curb cut, and I know that that's not your intent, but if I am a new boat owner and I'm not sure how I maneuver my trailer and I get stuck in the middle of Summit Street, that will be an extreme issue for this council.
That existing curb cut is more than wide enough. Can I also just address the hours, because so many councils brought up great points that I didn't think about, you know? Without trying to go back on anything, I would prefer not to change the hours of operation, only because I forgot about summer seasons and when the days are so much longer, I mean, there are days in the middle of the summer where the sun is still up at 9:00 in the evening. And Tom brought up a good point, too, about, better to have people come back a little later than try to beat the clock. So if the councils don't have a problem with that, I'd like to stay with the hours that they currently have. Thank you.
And then just the last one regarding the, and I know Councilor Sharis mentioned this earlier, regarding the late communication by the fire department, making sure that the parking plan shall not obstruct any fire department access or operations or egress.
I spoke with Chris Dowling about that, and he just wants to make sure we stripe the property as it's shown on the plan.
Perfect, thank you. Councilor Sharis.
Yeah, through you, Council President. Again, my concern was shortening the times, but I really wish you had a, you know, thought process before you were agreeing to cut the hours down, because you put in a little predicament here. Again, personally, I don't, because we have other people coming in, probably with even larger vehicles, larger U-Hauls, trailers, we don't set a exemption on a truck pulling a trailer that has storage in that and bringing it to this, the storage center there. So again, I don't have a problem, because I think by 10 o'clock, most people are going to be gotten their boat in there by then, or their RV in there by then, but 10 o'clock is certainly would be the latest, because you have the operation hours. But I'm going to say, if it is an issue, I'm going to bring you back.
I wouldn't expect anything less than you had.
I think you know me, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to hold it to you, and I'm also, they can't get in, no one can get in after 10 anyways, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Councilor Sharis, I'll withdraw my recommendation. Thank you.
I have one last question. So I'm going to lay out a scenario for you, and let me know what would be the remedy to this. If I'm a boat owner, RV owner, and I get there at 10:10, is there going to be enough turning radius before the gate to be able to turn on property to exit?
I would have to look at the site plan, I've been to that location several times. Yes, there would be sufficient radius to back back out again, without backing out onto Summit Street.
Thank you. Any further questions by the council? Seeing none, Councilor Sharis.
Thank you, Council President, I'd like to close the hearing, please.
You heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Councilor Sharis.
Thank you, Council President, I'd like to move to approve the application for North America Self-Storage Group LLC, 3595 Cadillac Ave., Costa, Beca, California, for a special permit, seeking modified special permit 16-2017 by deleting the condition for not outdoor storage and allow for outdoor storage in recreational vehicles, RVs, and boats not to exceed 18 in total at 137 Summit Street, Puyboddy, Mass., filed in accordance to section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7, with the conditions of the fire department's recommendation and request that no parking, the parking plan will be striped, and the no obstruction of entering, so be. The Department of Board of Health to enact a rodent control, the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission on their requests and an approval from them prior to the use being used, to meet what they are requesting, as long as it is deemed that way, or obviously you don't get to use it. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything, and I do not, so moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Sharis. On the motion, Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Councilor Sharis. Did you catch the DPS input? They had a, all recreational vehicles, you've got that?
Thank you, also the DPS with the, all vehicles with no storage of portable tanks, is that the one? Yes. So moved.
Well, DPS was, wanted to make sure that everything was on existing pavement, so that was separate from the, from the, from the Health Department. The Health Department had two, one that you mentioned, and the second one was the develop protocols to ensure that vehicles are empty of food and other waste tanks that have been emptied before storage. I'm sure that has to do with rodent control as well.
Absolutely, yes. And I believe it's all pavement back there anyways, correct?
That is correct. There's no additional impervious coverage that we're proposing.
With those included. Thank you. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Sches, Sharis, sorry. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the reports of committee, legal affairs, Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, we had a legal affairs subcommittee meeting. In attendance were all the members of the legal affairs committee, Councilor McGinn, Councilor O'Neil, Councilor Sassla, Councilor Turco. We're also joined by Councilor Gould, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor O'Neil, and Councilor Rozignal. We had two items on the agenda. The first was regarding a parcel of, a donation of a parcel of land at Zero Trask Road. In attendance, we had Roseanne Baccos, who is operating as the personal representative of her mother's estate. Her parents were the owners of the property, former city councils Vincent Reponey and Marion Reponey. It is Ms. Baccos's intention to donate the parcel of land to the city, it is currently in wetlands, and her wish was to donate that to the city. We took a vote unanimously approved to move to accept the parcel of Zero Trask Road and forward it to the city solicitors, so that the city solicitor could take all the necessary actions to execute that donation. So moved, Mr. President.
You heard the motion. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla. Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Mr. President, we, the second item on the agenda was regarding a parcel of land at 156 Arbutholme Street. The current owner of the parcel was giving the city the first right of refusal to purchase said property prior to putting it out on the open market. There was a discussion amongst the members of the committee and the other councilors regarding its possibility of being, that future development could occur on that property that has ledge and other obstructions, but with the technology of today, development is possible in just about every type of terrain. The motion was to refer this matter of the right of first refusal for the purchase of 156 Arbutholme Street to the community, to the Community Development Department to research the uses of the property and the possibility of using community preservation funds to purchase said property. So moved. That was approved with unanimously as well.
You heard the motion by Councilor Ryan Melville. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
That was all we had this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Melville. We also had a meeting of the whole prior to the regular scheduled council meeting. There were actually two items on the agenda, but a third one was added. First item on the agenda was statements of interest for the South Memorial Elementary School and the West Memorial Elementary School. That statement of interest was presented by Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn from the school committee. In attendance was Councilor Welton, Councilor Sassla, Councilor Gould, Councilor Sharis, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor Turco, Councilor O'Neil, Councilor Melville, Councilor McGinn, and myself. Also in attendance were Superintendent Mark Kerbel, Principal of the West School, Nick Coller, Assistant Superintendent and High School Principal, Chris Lord, as well as Mr. Hockman and Mr. Arnottis from the school board. There was a motion to pass, the statement of interest being read by Councilor McGinn. I will refer to that reading at this time, so we don't have to be redundant, and I'd make a motion to follow the committee of the halls recommendation. So moved. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we voting both at this point, or as read? Are we voting one and then the other? Are we voting one and then the other?
Why don't we take the South Memorial School first as read in subcommittee? I'm being told by our new city clerk that that has to be read in its entirety in the Committee of the Whole. So I will defer to Councilon McGinn for the verbiage.
I want to personally thank the clerk for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve and submit the following statement of interest to the MSBA regarding South Memorial Elementary School resolved having convened in an open meeting on February 13, 2020, prior to the closing date. PBD City Council, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest SOI form dated February 14, 2020, for the South Memorial Elementary School located at 16 Maple Street Extension, PBD, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is the accelerated repair program for the repair and/or replacement of roofs. The specific objective of this statement of interest is to partner with the MSBA for the replacement of the failing roof of the entire facility of the South Memorial School as articulated in the South Memorial Elementary School SOI. And the PBD City Council hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding committed from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits city, town, regional school district to file an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
You heard the motion. On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
The West School, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve and submit the statement of interest to the MSBA regarding the West Memorial Elementary School resolved having convened in an open meeting on February 13, 2020, prior to the closing date. The City Council of PBD, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 14, 2020, for the West Memorial Elementary School located at 15 Bow Street, PBD, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is the accelerated repair program for the repair and/or replacement of roofs. The specific objective of this statement of interest is to partner with the MSBA for the replacement of the failing roof of the entire facility of the West Memorial School as articulated in the West Memorial Elementary School SOI. And the PBD City Council hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilon McGinn. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Second item on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole was a pay raise for your honor the mayor. That was approved for a 2% raise for this year starting in July. That was approved by the Committee of the Whole on a vote of 7 to 4. And I will ask for that be, to be, make a motion for the mayor's salary. So moved. Vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
No.
Turco.
No.
O'Neil.
No.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 3.
Third item on the agenda for the Committee as a whole, subcommittee, was recognition of the two football teams both going undefeated. Joel, do you want to comment? Sorry, Councilor Sassla, would you like to comment?
Sure. Earlier this evening, we had the president of PBD Youth Football, Billy Woods, and we recognized both the 5th and 6th grade Boy Spartans team and the 7th and 8th grade Gladiator football teams. They both went undefeated and won the Super Bowl. We had a brief ceremony, and we handed out certificates signed from the mayor for their recognition and also acknowledged the hard work of the parents and of the boys, and it was a very enjoyable ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sassla. Could I have a motion to receive late communication regarding the votes on the SOIs, please?
So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilon McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. We'll now move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Councilor Welton.
Move to receive item 9B.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Being all papers. Nothing else. Thank you.
Councilor Sassla.
Thank you, Council President. Motion to receive item 7A and send that to legal affairs.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to receive item 9D in conjunction, excuse me, make sure, yes. Motion to receive item 9D in conjunction with item 8D and set up a special permit application hearing. So moved.
We'll take one at a time. Motion to receive, all papers being in order, 9D. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. And I'm sorry, what was the other motion?
So 8D, which does require a special permit hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Sassla.
Thank you. Motion to receive item 8G, set up a special, special permit hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to receive item 8H. Receive it and approve all papers being in order.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to receive item 8I. Receive and approve all papers being in order.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
So I can motion, we have a late communication that we received on our desk. It was, I believe everyone got it, email from Committee Man Jared Hockman in regard to the unanimous opposition from the school committee, including the chair, which is Mayor Bentoncourt, motion to receive that communication.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
In conjunction with that, what I'd like to propose is, I'd like to motion to receive item 8C, which is a letter from Council Ann Manning Martin, once again, to the Mass Housing Finance Authority in opposition to the King Street. And what I'd like to propose is a lot of the same items that she put in her letter, and then probably a few more actually, in opposition to the proposal. I'd like to see if we could get agreement unanimously to approve this letter and to all of us also agree and sign off on. I think we've had it for a period of time. I think it's well-written and says a lot of the reasons why we are not in favor of the 40B. But we do, we do certainly, as a council, have proven that we do support affordable housing, but this just is not the proper location. So motion to receive and open.
Receive. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
So I'd like to see if we could support this letter and rather than sending separate letters, if we could put our signature, just like the school committee was unified. I'd like to see the city council support this letter and all in agreement. And also, we can let the Mass Housing Finance Agency know that we support her letter as written.
On the motion, I'm gonna defer to Councilor Shuruss because I believe he was gonna make a similar motion. Councilor Shuruss.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, Councilor Sassla, I was prepared to honestly request a letter of statement from this council as a whole in the opposition of the 40B proposal at King Street. It being in my ward four, I strongly oppose it, and I've spoken to numerous people who have sent in letters themselves. I sent my own letter, but it would be looking for a letter of statement, a statement of letter, anywhere you want to word it, but basically, a statement from this council as a whole in the opposition on the 40B, as willing as every council here is willing to sign on that. No pressure, but that was gonna be a motion I was gonna make earlier.
Councilor Sassla.
Thank you, Council Shuruss. I guess my only question I had was time sensitivity. When are we supposed to have that prepared? And when would be prepared so that we could get that in? And obviously, everyone would probably want to read it and sign off on it, I assume. But I, I'm in support of what you want to do. I just was make sure we had the deadline and who would write it, and then it needed to be circulated so that we all could sign off on it.
Councilor Shuruss.
Thank you, Council President. That's why I was wording as a statement of a opposition from the whole. I believe most of the councilors might have submitted a letter on their own. Here would be just a statement of the opposition of the reasons that was been said. And pretty simple as that, as a two-sentence, that's all it needed to be. So moved.
If I may, one of the, Councilor Shuruss and I had a discussion regarding this topic, and my two cents would be, Clerk Danforth and I would sit down and hammer out a letter which would be completed tomorrow. It would be, it wouldn't be as elaborate as Council Manning Martin's, but it would be a strong statement of disapproval by the council as a whole. And by a vote of the council tonight, she would have the authority to send it on the council's behalf.
Thank you, Council Rozignol. I have no issue with that. I would just caution, I think we do have to have a little bit, probably more than just a statement of opposition. I think we need to be a little bit specific to put the pressure on. And, you know, between, as I said, between Committee Man Hockman's letter and Council Ann Manning Martin's letter, I think we have a lot to work with, and I'm comfortable that you'll do it properly, and I support that and I appreciate that.
Thank you. So, I don't care who makes the.
Defer to Council Shuruss as it is as it was.
Thank you.
Let's see, finish. You want me to do it now before my motions? Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, co-motion with Council Rozignol, Council President, and a letter of statement of opposition to be hammered out by the council president and to get submitted into the mayor's office. I believe we have the liberty, he's, to show us that we'll be able to get it into our packet. And again, I know most of us have written letters, lengthy letters, in opposition for this and to be, to identify the key points of why we're in opposition. So moved.
Councilor Sassla on the motion.
The only request I have is that certainly to put it in with whatever packet is gonna be going through the mayor's office to the Mass Housing Finance Agency. But I also would request that a separate individual letter be sent via certified mail to Mr. Michael Busby at the Mass Housing Finance Agency on behalf of the city council. Thank you.
Fine with that. On the amended motion, roll call.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that Council Manning Martin's points, of which they are strong and powerful, get recognized. So if you could please make sure when you do draft your letter, please pull out some of the powerful impact that Council Manning Martin has here. Thank you.
There. Will do. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilor Sassla.
Further motion. Thank you, Council President.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item 9G. I'd like to make a motion to receive and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And that is it. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, and it feels great to be back. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have, make a motion to have Department of Public Services install a stop sign at the intersection of Larus Road and Reynolds Road. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Councilor Welton to have the Recreation Director, please update the council as to a plan, if there is one, to have the playground slash park at the end of Whitney Drive. Updated. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Councilor Shuruss.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a suspension of the rules to accept item 8F. And also to ask the Border Health, again, to, I know that she does it on a timely basis, to let all the trash haulers that we have currently in the city a reminder of times of our ordinance of pickup. I would like to, on this issue, give the opportunity for this particular hauler to come in and answer some questions about the pickup. Unfortunately, he chose a different manner to express his thoughts. I thought it would be a good dialogue, so have some good points. But I think at some point in time, we're gonna have to, maybe on a subcommittee, have every hauler come in and recognize what our ordinance is. And again, they bring up some good points, but we have an ordinance for a reason, and we need to enforce it. So moved. Thank you.
Opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Shuruss.
Yes. Just like to give thanks to the DPW Director, La Bossi, a thank you. Last week, I called him when the billboard-sized sign for the construction on Lowell Street was put up and really across, taking up the whole sidewalk. It wasn't our sign, it was the vendor's sign. He called and had it moved properly. So I just want to say thank you for that. We want to keep our sidewalks open. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All set? Councilor Shuruss. Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No motions, but I do want to as well welcome Council Mitsoulis back. We missed you. Glad to see you. It was nice to see you at the neighborhood meeting last night, and I'm glad you're feeling well. We all missed you, and I'm sure your family's happy that you're back on.
And like I said, I'm, I am ecstatic to be back. I really am. Thank you.
Counselor Turco.
I just have one motion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, and try to word this the best I can. If any other council would like to add to it or change it, be more than welcome, but it would be a motion to the city solicitor to answer a question on behalf of this council as to whether a council vote to alter or change a use on a parcel which has a pre-existing non-conforming use. Would that change, set a precedent as to whether we would have to allow that same use on other pre-existing non-conforming parcels throughout the city of PBD? Hopefully, that's clear enough, if everybody gets it, but I just would like a written response from the city solicitor as to that question. No further motions.
You heard the motion by Counselor Turco. On the motion, Counselor Shirez.
Yeah, I'm not sure I, I'm going to have the wording correctly, but can we have it speeded up? What's the term that we use to ask for?
Expedited quickly. It will be.
Expedited. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions tonight.
Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions this evening, but I could pick up some of these. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve, with all papers being in order, taxi driver's license for Lamont Chisholm, license 55, James Kozick, license 56, Steven Roberts, license 57. So moved.
The motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Melville.
Under suspension of the rules, move to approve item 9C, entertainment license for Champions Pub, 114 Foster Street. Move to approve 2020 renewal, with all papers being in order. So moved.
The motion, all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions this evening.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive a late communication that we have on our desk, dated February 11th, 2020, with respect to two city council appointments to the Community Development Authority. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, received, move to approve the reappointments of Gary J. Bua, 14 Polk Anderson's Drive, PBD, Mass, and Brian Bonagro, 44 Murdoch Drive, PBD, Mass, to the Community Development Authority, each for a one-year term, to expire December 31st, 2020. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B. And this is a communication from his honor of the mayor with respect to a long list of reappointments of city employees, department heads, and various members of boards and commissions. So I would move to approve these reappointments as per this communication from his honor of the mayor, dated February 7th, 2020, with the exception of, on page two, Mr. Gary Bua and Mr. Brian Bonagro are listed on here. Those are listed, they're not mayoral appointments, they're city council appointments that we just voted on a moment ago. So with the exception of those two edits, move to approve the list as submitted. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed?
Can I request a roll call vote on that, Mr. President?
Roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
I have a question on the motion. I apologize before, but the addresses for Gary Bua are different on both forms, and I just wanted to make sure we're voting on the right Gary Bua, I guess.
It is the same person, but the addresses are different.
No further explanation needed. Yes, yes. There was a yes vote, by the way.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7C. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive items 7E, F, and G, and refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did we already get 9E? That was a, we did not move to receive item 9E and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive a late communication dated February 12th, 2020, from Mr. Charles Arfanos, who is the manager of the PBD Municipal Light Plant. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that communication is, relates to the matter of, of item 9F. So with respect to item 9F, move to refer the matter to the PBD Municipal Light Plant and the city solicitor for a review. So moved.
The motion, all in favor.